All right, six o'clock, this call is meeting in order, roll call please.
As soon as you adjourn the last one, Mayor.
So moved.
Okay, now, can we call this meeting in order, please?
Kurt Smith. Gustafson.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Winn.
Here.
Brabner.
Here.
Here, our invocation and pledge will be led by Councilmember Kurt Smith, if you please rise.
Father, we do thank you so much for just the opportunity to serve. God, we saw yesterday how powerful of a God you are, God, and just thank you for keeping us safe during that storm. And I thank you so much for those men and women who serve us every day, our first responders, and just, God, thank you for keeping them safe in that situation as well. God, we just pray now for wisdom as we consider the items before us tonight, and just pray that we would honor you with all that we say and do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ask for the approval of the minutes, previous meeting, work session, March seventeen, twenty twenty-five, and the regular meeting, March seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Any corrections? Not stand approved as written. Committee reports, Ms. Gaines.
No report, sir.
Ms. Connor.
No further reports, Mayor.
Lieutenant Sarubin.
No report, sir.
Chief Few.
No report, Mayor.
Shannon.
No report.
Yeah, I am going to. Casey, do you have some pictures from that slide? This past Tuesday, we took the junior city council to Montgomery in an effort to help have them learn more about how their state government works. Up until this point, we've been doing a lot of stuff in municipality, they've been dealing with municipalities and so on, and in working within the city, but we took them into Montgomery. At Montgomery, we did a lot of things up there. This was, they got to go to the Alabama Public Television Station there that's on the Capitol. Representative Matt Simpson really gave us a tour of the Capitol and a lot of stuff. It was a very, very, very busy day, but we started with that tour with Representative Simpson. This one, here's a slide in the TV studio where they do on-air interviews and things like that at the Capitol. But then we also met with not only Representative Simpson in his office, we also got to go down to the floor of the State House. This was them when the House was not in session, obviously, and so they got to really listen and learn more about how things happen in the state. So organized chaos, but it seems like it worked very, very well, and they got to see that. So really, after this, we also spent some time in the Senate. This was the students looking at the rotunda, very, very beautiful ceiling in that, but even Mayor's got a picture on there. But anyway, so let me see what other slides you have there. This one was in the old building. This is where the governor does her state address and things like that, so we got a picture of them there. Notice that we even let Luke, he's in the IB program, he's in the Spanish Fort Junior City Council, but he goes to the IB program in Daphne. So we let him bring the helmet in there, and our helmet is at the very end on the, I think Chris just got that one. So this was. Yeah. All right, next time. More of the conversation with the students going through and looking and learning, it very steps along the way. This was in the archives, they pulled out some things that were very, very localized to Baldwin County, and really started showing some pictures of some things, some letters that were written, and pictures of Baldwin County, Spanish Fort specifically, and really, unless you knew what they were. I think some people may have known what they were, but a lot of us couldn't recognize places they were really that old. But we were, we spent a lot of time down in the archives seeing kind of behind-the-scenes stuff. There are over, there are thousands of documents down there that don't make their way to the top, and this was down in the Archives Building, seeing some of the items that they have down there. And that was it. Now, one of the last things that they learned, and this is one of the things, my follow-up item with them, was as we were sitting in the gallery of the House, it went, "Well", then we went over to the gallery of the Senate, and the students got to learn what a filibuster was. And that was excruciatingly painful to watch, but they learned how that system works because there was an active filibuster going on in the Senate at that point. And so they learned a lot and had a lot of topics, but yeah, I was tasked with finding out what that filibuster was all about and what strategy was behind it. So I have to report that back to the junior council at the next meeting, but that was their trip to Montgomery.
Thank you, Carl. Mr. Smith, I skipped right over you for planning commission, I apologize.
Well, that's okay, I'll try not to take it personal. Nothing new to report that's been passed since the last time we met, but there's several things under consideration, including site plan. Site plans for the hotel locations at Eastern Shore Center, and also for the property, the convenience store that's proposed at the corner of Stagecoach and Thirty-One. So those are still under consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mary, you have anything for the three-mil commission?
Yeah, Casey, we've got another video to play that speaks of all the good things that our three-mil tax money is doing for our schools.
Hi, I'm Kelly Knapp, I'm the scene coach at Spanish Fort Elementary School. Welcome to one of our scene labs. Three mil has benefited us in so many ways, we wouldn't be able to have this program without the support of the three-mil tax. As you can see, a lot of our students are doing indie robots today, and this is one of the activities that we have that was purchased with three-mil money. We have a part-time person that works with us, and it's Melanie Dravila, she's our part-time scene teacher, and that is funded by the three-mil tax also. The students, they come on a weekly basis, all pre-K through sixth grade, for forty minutes, so they see us every week, which is a very good bonus for our school. The three-mil tax has given us funds for all of our consumables this year, our makerspace items. For the past three years, we've had this in our budget. We've also purchased two garden towers through three-mil, and we've had a mentor, support person from Garden Tower come help us get started, and that's also a new three-mil. Three mil matters.
We had our last meeting in March at Spanish Fort Elementary in Ms. Knapp's classroom, and the hydroponic tower that they have, well, you were there, you were there. And we all left with a bag of fresh lettuce that they had grown there, and it really did, it was so much better than anything you could get at the grocery store, it was unbelievable. They even took the excess vegetables and lettuce that they had and made a donation to the Prodigy Pantry, so that was really good. All of our meetings are open to the public, the next one will be April the twenty-fourth at Rockwell at five-thirty, and that's a really good one to come to if you want to because we will be looking at the proposals for next year's school year on what the teachers and principals would like to see. I also want to give a huge plug to our high school, we had three students that scored perfectly, what is it, twenty-six? Thirty-two, excuse me, thirty-two on the ACT. Thirty-six on the ACT, see, it's been forever since I took it.
That's why we didn't get thirty-six.
That's true. So three mil does matter, and I think those students will tell you that a lot of the cram classes and things that they've done really did get them prepared. And it's just, I mean, most schools don't get one thirty-six ACT, and we had three of them, so three mil does matter.
So far, I know a number of students are still taking it, some of them are pretty close, because we have some of our junior council that are pretty close to them as well.
Mayor, if I could add one item, if that's okay, just briefly. On the junior city council meeting that went to Montgomery, I wanted to add in there also that they were able to see a couple of the other elected officials as well. They got to spend time with Senator Elliott in his office prior to going into session, also got to see the Secretary of State. And prior to the meeting, Representative Simpson, Senator Elliott, and Senator Figures, and Councilmember Gustafson had reported that earlier, they came by and met with them prior to, prior meeting nights, prior to going up there. We were not able to reach Senator Figures because she was in part of the debate that he referred about to on the floor that day, but it was a great day. And I also want to thank Allison Marlowe from their Legislative Delegation Office, she was very helpful in trying to get things scheduled, and it worked out real well. And then just as a reminder, you may want to talk about safety today, they've had a busy week, that was Saturday.
Yes, that was sponsored by USA, and junior city council was more than happy to come up and show up on a Saturday to lend a hand and help a lot of them up here with CPR, so.
A few things I'll add to all of these reports. The junior council had the opportunity to visit just a little bit with Senator Albretton also, who is a man you want to have the opportunity to deal with because he controls the purse strings about what happens up there, so that was good. I will go with Mary on this, three mil does matter. It has proven to be very beneficial to our city. I know that some people may not like to pay three mils to their Adblocker, but I can assure you their property values have gone up more than what they're investing in our city. And with three perfect scores and perhaps more to come, it is definitely working, so very proud of that. It comes up for renewal in what, three years, something like that, three or four years? So we've got to continue to push it, we've got to know why this is working, these are the results of what we're doing. So, Mary, thank you for your efforts on that committee. Anyone else? Shane, you have a report, or Steve, or anybody else reports on it? Okay. All right, let's go to public participation. Now, as your opportunity, if you'd like to discuss anything with the council, please come forward to the podium, press the speak button, and give us your name and address. Anyone like to address the council? Seeing nobody dashing to the podium, we're under announcements. Sunday, April thirteenth, Mobile Pops, which will be this Sunday, correct? They'll be performing a free concert here at the Community Center at six o'clock. Bring your tailgate chairs and enjoy the pops by the pond. There'll be an art show by the Spanish Fort High School Art Club beginning at five o'clock inside the community center. The following weekend, April nineteenth, the city of Spanish Fort will partner with former Alabama NFL football player Wallace Gilbury to present an Easter egg hunt at Integrity Park. The public is invited to begin arriving at noon. Pictures with the Easter Bunny will begin at twelve-thirty. Easter egg hunt will occur at two PM. There'll be a youth football camp at three PM for children seven through fourteen, and there'll be a three-on-three basketball tournament on that brand-new court that we built out there, beginning at four o'clock for youth between the ages of ten and fourteen. Free food, prizes, and drinks, along with over ten thousand Easter eggs, and some special guests that Mr. Gilbury is bringing in, I'm not sure who they are, but I'm sure they're former players of some sort to present football tips to the kids. The fifteenth annual Delta Woods and Water Expo, sponsored by the city of Spanish Fort and Five Rivers Delta Resource Center, will be held at Five Rivers on the causeway, April twenty-sixth, from nine AM to three PM, featuring presentations and exhibitions by experienced outdoorsmen, professionals, educators, enthusiasts, and Delta Woods and Water Expo includes numerous fun and exciting hands-on demonstrations which allow attendees to learn and practice new skills with one-on-one instruction. The event is free to the public. There is no old business, and a new business is always good, we got a swearing-in of a couple of firefighters, Chief Few. Ms. Gaines will administer the oath to Zachary Guy and Jerick Harrison.
All right, if y'all raise your right hands and repeat after me, I state your name.
Hi, Chair Harrison.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama and the laws thereof, as long as I am a citizen thereof.
In the Constitution of the State of Alabama and the laws thereof, as long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly, without partiality or prejudice, execute and discharge the duties of the office of firefighter.
And I will faithfully and honestly, without partiality or prejudice, execute and discharge the duties of the office of firefighter.
For the city of Spanish Fort, Alabama, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
For the city of Spanish Fort, Alabama, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
Chief, here you go. This is your one chance to speak. You want to say something?
I'll say something. Just want to say I appreciate everybody coming out and supporting this, and I'm very proud to be a farmer for the city of Spanish Fort and provide for the community, so thank y'all.
I'd just like to say thank you to the city of Spanish Fort.
I want to thank both of you gentlemen, it's a pleasure to welcome you to our city, you're going to find that the city will reach out to you with welcoming arms from the cities, the citizens of our city. On behalf of the city council, thank you and welcome to our employees. All right, moving to the agenda, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance number seven oh one, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance authorizing the issuance of two million dollar city of Spanish Fort general obligation warrant, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed ordinance authorizing the issuance of a two million dollar city of Spanish Fort general obligation warrant for twenty twenty-five. This ordinance would authorize the issuance of the warrant to United Bank in an amount up to two million dollars. The purpose of this warrant is to purchase certain real property or parcels of real property adjacent to Spirit Park, also to purchase an E-one fire pumper truck. The term of the warrant will be for a period, a term of ten years with an interest rate at three point eight five percent. And I would suggest as part of this, if you decide to approve this tonight, just for form purpose, it was previously introduced, but just for form purposes, to suspend the rules as well as part of this process.
Just why?
We normally do that on warrants like this, in case there's any questions from the previous drafts, it just, we've done it every time we've ever done one.
All right. Any discussion from the council? Hearing no discussion, I'll open up the public hearing, public hearing is now open. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward, give us your name and address. Close the public hearing. Any discussion from the council? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
Brabner? Mayor?
Yes, I have a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt ordinance seven oh one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
So, any discussion? I will say this, this is another piece of where we're going as a city. Our fire department is growing every day, two new ones, and then we got to go buy these nine hundred thousand dollar fire trucks to put them on, so it's another piece of what we're doing as a city. It's a mark of a growing city, and I'm going to get on my bandstand just a little bit here. You know, we're growing at a good rate. We're growing at a two-point-three to two-point-five percent annual rate, which is a good, steady growth. We're not growing at the double-digit rates that perhaps some of the other cities have chosen to go with other ways to do that. We have chosen to take another route, so I'm very proud of where we are, and things like this is how we do it because we keep up with the infrastructure. It's very important that we do it this way. So, anybody else have anything they want to say? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Winn?
Brabner? Mayor?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. I'm going to backtrack just a second here, I sort of skipped over something I really wanted to cover in my little speech, just now reminded me of it. I want to thank our Public Works and Parker Recreation staff for last night. They went above and beyond, they were in here till three, four in the morning, trying to get your roads up and running. They were faced with some challenging times. Shannon and his whole crew worked diligently through the night to protect the citizens of our city. And our first responders, police and fire, did the same thing, but Shannon, you and your crew did an outstanding job. Thank you from the council, I appreciate that. Moving to ordinance number seven oh two, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance, admitting ordinance number six eighty-eight, twenty twenty-four, altering and establishing the district lines or boundaries for the twenty twenty-five and subsequent municipal elections. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, the city council previously held public hearings regarding proposed district boundary lines for the purpose of establishing boundary lines for the twenty twenty-five and subsequent municipal elections. Based on the decennial census that occurred in twenty twenty, this is the first election that will occur after that, and you have to reapportion, especially if you've had changes in population in your districts, or if you've enlarged the districts, and Spanish Fort's done both. It had an increase in population as well as annexations that have occurred. The public hearings that were held were based on the census blocks, and there are some areas where the census block includes all of the property that's in the city. There's other areas where portions of the census block are in or out. In addition, we discovered that there was an annexation that really didn't involve very many residents, but did involve business properties that were annexed by a local legislative act. So this would clean up those boundary areas, make them a part of the appropriate districts, as well as, for example, Honor Park. There's nobody residing on Honor Park, that was a recent annexation, and so it likewise has been added to District Five as it's adjacent to Spanish Fort Estates, and then those remaining parcels along Thirty-One were assigned to either District One or District Two or District Three, depending on their proximity. And so this will be up for a public hearing at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, discussion from the council? Like to announce that we have a public hearing Monday, April twenty-first, to hear any comments for those in favor or opposed to the proposed ordinance. Moving to resolution fourteen eighty-eight, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Vital Exam LLC to provide professional consulting and related services for firefighter examinations. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, based on the activities that firefighters engage in, and the exposure that they have in certain instances, and their need to provide for and take care of their health, this proposed agreement would be between the city of Spanish Fort and Vital Exam LLC to provide professional consulting and related services for employee physical examinations for firefighters. The amount that would be charged for the basic services provided at six hundred and twenty-five dollars per physical, but they are allowed to provide additional services if deemed necessary as it relates to a particular need. The testing and examination will be done on a place at the fire station or city hall provided for that to be done. They will come to the site to conduct those examinations, and a copy of the proposal in quote, "in agreement" are attached as exhibits to the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Connor, any discussion from the council? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt resolution fourteen eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-five. Second.
Any discussion?
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
Brabner? Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to present resolution fourteen eighty-nine, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Sunbelt Fire for the purchase of an E-one custom pumper. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed resolution to enter an agreement with Sunbelt Fire for the purchase of an E-one custom pumper. A copy of that proposal is attached as exhibit one. The pumper is, cost is nine hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. There's a lead-out time of approximately one thousand and fifty calendar days. As a result of how this works and how long it takes, they do offer a discount of eighty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars if you pay upfront. So part of the financing that you all approved earlier for the issuance of the warrant to United Bank to provide financing would be to make that payment in advance, saving approximately eighty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars on the purchase of the truck. And then, as the mayor mentioned in work session, that money could be used as to provide equipment to further outfit the vehicle as well.
Thank you, Ms. Connor, discussion from the council?
I just happened to see a paragraph that I wanted to question. The manufacturer reserves the right to make model and engineering changes where deemed necessary for improvement without prior notice. If it costs more, are we going to get charged more? Okay.
Any other discussion on this item? Do I have a motion to approve, to adopt?
Make a motion. Make a motion to adopt resolution number fourteen eighty-nine, twenty twenty-five. Second.
Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
Brabner? Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. We do have a representative from United Community Bank here, Mr. Greg Walker. Mr. Walker, if you would, if you'll get us all the paperwork and everything we need to execute to do the general obligation to move forward with the official documents for Becky, if you'll get me tomorrow so I can execute it, so we can get this moving, so we can buy this fire truck, okay? Thank you both. Moving to resolution fourteen ninety, twenty twenty-five, a resolution awarding the bid for Spanish Fort Estates Sidewalk Phase One, known as the Mary Brabner Memorial Sidewalk. I'm sorry, I had to do that. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is the first phase of the Spanish Fort Estates sidewalk project. The city council on its last budget set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start the design for basically get design and scope to go through. to start the design for, for basically get design and scope to go through the, through the estates. Uh, and then the remaining balance of what was left over was to be used for this first phase, and then it's understanding you'll continue to have budget discussions about that as you move forward. A cop, the lowest responsible responsive bidder in this case was Grant Nichols Construction, Inc., in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seven dollars, uh, as the first phase of construction for the sidewalks.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? May I have a motion, Mary?
I proudly make a motion to adopt resolution fourteen ninety dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Brab-
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure, yes. Re- the re- resolution is adopted. I'm not sure swapping the order out on roll call is the proper etiquette here, but I appreciate, I appreciate it, yeah, yeah. Moving to resolution fourteen ninety-one, twenty twenty-five, a resolution accepting certain streets for maintenance. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is proposed resolution to accept streets in Churchill Phase Five for maintenance, including, uh, Thistle Down Loop and Bramshell Drive, based on the completion of Churchill Phase Five. Uh, the, a copy of the proposed maintenance bond, uh, was provided, we have provided changes for that, but we've not received the updated bond, so it's recommended that this be moved, postponed to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any discussion from the council? As Mr. Connor mentioned, we'll hold this over to your April twenty-first agenda. Moving to resolution fourteen ninety-four, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to, into an agreement with Forever Lawn, Inc., for materials and installation of a children's playground. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a, uh, materials to be, uh, provide turf, uh, for the playground at the, uh, pickleball park adjacent to, or in the Spanish Fort Town Center. Uh, Forever Lawn, Inc., will be providing the materials and installation of the children's pla- for the children's playground of this turf. If the city council approves this, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars for labor and materials, a copy of the proposal and the specifications of that product are attached as an exhibit.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any discussion? This is being introduced tonight, will be on your April twenty-first agenda. Moving to resolution fourteen ninety-five, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving an, an agreement between the City of Spanish Fort and Alabama Department of Transportation for grading and or landscaping on a right-of-way. Mr. Connor?
Uh, Mayor, the, uh, the governor and the Alabama Department of Transportation participated and awarded funds for the purchase of the old Hudson Oil Site on the Causeway. Uh, the City of Spanish Fort is, uh, building Valor Park. They also provided funding for the construction of those improvements as well. Uh, and this is a proposed agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to allow the removal of certain items of concrete and paving within the adjacent right-of-way in order to construct new parking spaces and access to the park that is being constructed. Uh, the proposed agreement with ALDOT for the maintenance of, and removal of those items is attached as an exhibit.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any discussion from the council? This item is being introduced tonight, will be on your April twenty-first agenda. Like to introduce resolution fourteen ninety-six, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Spanish Fort and Culture City for the provision of sensory inclusive training and equipment for the Spanish Fort Fire Rescue Department. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this resolution would approve a proposed memorandum of understanding with Culture City, uh, for the, uh, sensory inclusive training and equipment for the Spanish Fort Fire Rescue Department. Uh, in, in performing their duties, the fire department, as well as the police department, often come, uh, into people that need assistance, that may be suffering with sensory, uh, sensory issues, like persons with autism, post-traumatic stress disorder, Parkinson's, obsessive-compulsion disorder, attention deficit hyperactivity, and other disorders. This would give specific training to the fire department staff in order to how to engage with and assist, uh, persons that may be suffering from those sensory, sensory issues, as well as provide training, uh, bags and materials, or toys, or different things to help, uh, soothe and calm them, uh, in what might otherwise be a traumatic event. Uh, this agreement's for a term of three years, and there are, uh, Culture City will provide, uh, some of the training as, it, for free, or at least offset by grants they receive, and in the, uh, under the Abram Cohen Act, there are also other, uh, provisions for sensory bags and items to help assist with that, uh, service. Uh, this is at no cost to the city. That's being provided as part of this agreement, uh, to assist the fire department in their responses.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? This is also being introduced tonight, be on your twenty-first agenda. Like to introduce resolution fourteen ninety-seven, twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Spanish Fort and Coney, Inc., for the maintenance and service of an elevator installed at the Spanish Fort Community Center. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is, uh, continuation of the agreement and work to install an elevator to provide access to the upstairs at this building, and in particular, uh, the library. We had some, uh, people that requested that at, at some point in time in order to have access upstairs, uh, and the, the development of the library had gotten to a point that the city council determined it was appropriate to go ahead and install, uh, this elevator. Uh, this would be a maintenance agreement for Coney to provide maintenance services, uh, for the lump sum of thir- three thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars per year, which is general maintenance. Any items outside that scope would be, uh, performed by them, uh, as part of their work on a cost and, and, uh, labor basis.
Excuse me, any discussion from the council?
I think it would be really cool to let the young lady who brought this to our attention be the first person from the public to ride our elevator, and we could make a big promotion thing about that.
Yeah, we hear what you're, we hear what you're asking us, and this is what we did.
Do we have a way of finding her?
Oh, absolutely. We know where to find her.
It's...
I don't have any problem.
That'd be awesome.
As it should be done. Any other discussion? Because of the need to get this service contract in place, to get this elevator up and moving up and down, uh, I would ask that we suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, I have a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt resolution fourteen ninety-seven, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson? Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to introduce resolution fourteen ninety-eight, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Turf Tank USA, Inc., for the rental of a robotic paint sprayer for athletic fields. Mr. Connor?
Uh, Mayor, this is a proposed agreement with Tank US, Inc., for the rental of a robotic paint sprayer for athletic fields. Uh, the city, through its, um, parks and recreation and construction of baseball fields, softball fields, soccer fields, has a considerable number of fields that would require to be, are required to be painted in order to have athletic facilities and teams play. Uh, requires a lot of labor and time, and this is a, a programmed robot that basically works off the top, off of satellites through global positioning and other things with the software that this company has developed, uh, to basically paint and do those lines, uh, itself, uh, based on, um, programs that it offers. A copy of the proposed agreement is attached as exhibit one. Uh, the amount of the contract is sixteen thousand dollars a year for a total of forty-eight thousand dollars for three years, and there's a seventeen hundred dollar upfront, uh, implementation. Now, the idea being that there'd be considerable savings of time and effort and, uh, service related to this.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any discussion from the council? Tell you, this will be a good piece of equipment for our park and recreation guys. Uh, save a lot of labor, saves a lot of paint. Uh, our guys can set it in motion and go pick weeds, or empty garbage cans, do everything while this does this job. So, uh, this is one of those things that, uh, Shannon, I want to thank them for inviting me out to look at the demonstration. Um, it's one of those things that excites you when you see something like that. It's so cool, make it, thing work, so. Any other discussion? Being introduced tonight, be on your April twenty-first agenda. Like to introduce resol- resolution fourteen ninety-nine, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services between the City of Spanish Fort and VDCI. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, uh, this proposed resolution with VDCI, uh, is for the purpose of providing mosquito control in the City of Spanish Fort. Uh, there was a similar agreement entered into last year by the city and this company. Uh, this agreement would be for services rendered between April one, twenty twenty-five through October thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. A copy of the agreement is attached as an exhibit. Uh, the amount of the contract is twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, and Mr. Burrows reported that's the same amount of the contract. They did not raise that amount over last year.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? Since it has rained a little bit lately, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, uh, motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt resolution number fourteen ninety-nine, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. We have one item to be added to our agenda tonight is resolution fifteen hundred, twenty twenty-five. Authorizing the mayor to City of Spanish Fort. I don't know why this keeps cutting off. It drives me crazy. But to enter an agreement for the acquisition of certain real property located within the corporate limits of the City of Spanish Fort. Mr. Connor?
Uh, Mayor, this is proposed resolution fifteen hundred, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to enter, uh, agreement to purchase certain real property in Battle End Subdivision. Uh, this has been under discussion for some time, uh, and the city's been involved in due diligence regarding the site. This property adjoins the property owned by United Bank, uh, which the city is under contract to purchase as well. Uh, this, a part of the funding from the warrant that was approved earlier will be used to purchase this property. A copy of the proposed agreement is attached. Uh, the owner of the property is WA Freeze and Sons Timber and Land Company, Inc. The amount of the proposed purchase price is three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and this would be for your review and consideration and approval. Uh, because this is, uh, the, the first time that's been introduced, we would ask that you suspend the rules and adopt if you are, uh, in approval, in agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? You know, we've been talking about this piece of property for quite a while now, and it's, it's a good little piece to add to what we have going, uh, between the United Community parcel that we bought across the street. This is adjacent to that, it's adjacent to Spirit Park. We all know the need at Spirit Park, Park for additional parking, for long-term growth. I think it's good that the city ties up this property for future government use. Uh, so I'm enthus- enthusiastically in favor of this particular resolution. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Yes, I have a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt resolution fifteen hundred, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
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 Brabner?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Uh, I, we have a request for a zero-two-zero restaurant retail liquor license, Suns, Suns- Sunshine GGSF LLC, doing business as Groovy Goat, six-three-five-zero, US Highway Ninety, Suite J, Spanish Fort, Alabama, three-six-five-two-seven. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a request for a license from Groovy Goat, applicant again Sunshine GGSF LLC. Uh, Groovy Goat has a location at the OWA Center. Uh, this would be a second location, in my understanding, in Baldwin County at the, uh, former location of Ed's Seafood Shed there at the corner of ninety-eight and, uh, thirty-one. Uh, they're requesting a restaurant retail liquor license, and the license request does appear to be in order.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any discussion from the council? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the motion carries. The license request is approved. Any further business come forward to council tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.